All right, so I'll call the April, day before tax day, April 14th, meeting of the La Habra Heights City Council to order. Do roll call. Brian?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Carol?
Here.
Norm?
Here.
And John's here. So let's all stand and do the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One second. One.
So Mayor, we did discuss some items in closed session as listed on the agenda, and there's no reportable action at this time. That is all.
Thank you, City Attorney. Sorry, just one second. I just got to get the agenda pulled up. There we go. All right. So it looks like we have a presentation by the Fire Department on the recently donated CPR, Lucas CPR machine. Chief Martin, are you going to walk us through this, or do you have someone?
Right. I'm going to have the crew that does it and also presentation by Chief Jorgensen.
Okay. All right. Come on in.
So on March 26th, 2025, the La Habra Heights Fire Department was officially approved by the LA County EMS Agency to operate the Lucas chest compression device for patients in non-traumatic cardiac arrest. Some of the key points I'd like to provide, or that the Lucas device provides uninterrupted cardiac chest compressions delivered at a consistent rate and depth while allowing for full chest recoil. It also allows for multitasking while administering medications, defibrillation, and providing for airway management. It also decreases provider fatigue, ensuring that the patient receives the highest quality CPR over extended periods aligned for medications to perform their intended task. ROS grades, which is what we refer to as return of spontaneous circulation, these are patients that we resuscitate in the field with a pulse and blood pressure. However, ROS grades for prehospital cardiac arrest without a Lucas device actually are between just 5% to 8%. With the Lucas device, ROS rates have shown improved rates of up to 30%. So on behalf of the La Habra Heights Fire Department, I would like to thank Gil Taylor, Rick Brooks, Ray Fernandez, the La Habra Heights Improvement Association, as well as the Los Compadres for their donation of this truly lifesaving device. Right now, we'll go ahead and have the firefighters and paramedics of the La Habra Heights Fire Department from Medic Engine 771 form a demonstration. Yes. Yes, so this device is kept on the engine 24/7. We already have had 90% of our crew trained in this device. And right now, the firefighters are initially providing chest compressions while the device is actually set up. So they put a backplate on, they put the device over the backplate, they pull the piston down, confirming that it's in the proper location, they push a button, and uninterrupted chest compressions of up to 120 per minute are provided at the proper rate and depth for consistency. This allows for multitasking. Again, decreases provider fatigue and frees our crews up to do everything else that we need to do during a cardiac arrest. We can also use this to attach to a stair chair. It's mobile. We can move this downstairs, prop the patient up to a 90-degree, their chest up to a 90-degree angle, and put it in an elevator as well without stopping chest compressions. Any questions? Yes, sir.
That doesn't crack externally?
No. No, what you're referring to is just intercostal, the intercostal contractions that you normally, that would normally happen during chest compressions. This isn't going to do anything outside of normal intercostal compression that happens in between the rib cage. That's that cracking that you would feel. Yes, sir? That's a good question.
So the patient criteria for this, they just have to, they just have to be able to fit within the device, and they're too small, there's lines on the inside. So it just depends, because you could say no one under the age of 13, but some children are larger than others. So it really just depends if they fit inside, or the plunger doesn't really get into a good spot on the chest. And obviously, if they're too big, like, we can't get the arms around the body. Does that answer your questions, sir?
No. No, that's going to be all mechanical manipulation on our end. Yes, we do. We can currently provide for airway management. Absolutely not, sir. Great. Thank you very much, guys. I appreciate it.
Okay, we have a presentation by Catherine Howen on the Puente Hills CTAC and vector control update.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Prespisco, members of the council, staff, and citizens of La Habra Heights. I, along with Roy Francis and Adam Nazaroff, are appointed by the city council to represent La Habra Heights on the Puente Hills Habitat Citizens Technical Advisory Committee. Adam is the chair this year, and I'm still the liaison to the board. I have been since I started in CTAC. I have provided the city manager the monthly update reports from the Habitat Authority, provided to the mayor each month this year about relevant matters related to the city. And I was wondering if you could please add this information to public record. The Habitat Authority does a lot of things in the background that many La Habra Heights citizens may not be totally aware of, and I'm only going to mention the highlights from the first quarter of 2025. The Habitat Board and staff have met with our new fire marshal, and they're very excited to be working with him. The Habitat staff provided information about the RMC state funding workshop and plant identification to the La Habra Heights Fire Department. And both the Habitat and the Fire Department are coordinating fire locks for emergency access points. And just an FYI, whenever the Habitat Authority does vegetation clearance, it is viewed and signed off by the fire marshal. So there are like, I'm going to talk about three different areas. The first, protection from fire. How do they do this? Fuel clearance. Extra clearance happened this past year because the Habitat Authority received extra funds. Since the beginning of 2025, in Powder Canyon, the Habitat removed hazardous trees along Black Walnut Trail emergency access route and fallen trees in the Powder Canyon. With the Conservation Corps of Long Beach, vegetation clearance from the emergency access route off of Skyline Drive near the water tank was done. Dried brush fire clearance was done in various areas throughout La Habra Heights. And goat grazing has been a very efficient way to clear brush, and we may see them in years to come. The second, we have the rangers. They have, the rangers have been and are on patrol with Type 6 engines. They carry about 100 to 200 gallons of water on their trucks in case they come into a small fire, which is a great backup for the La Habra Heights Fire Department. The rangers maintain a 24-hour response and monitor local weather patterns to adjust for extreme fire predictions. And just on the side, one continuous issue that the rangers deal with is illegal dumping in the habitat property, and they've been cleaning up these messes. Then the third is the remediation of the hills. What I mean by that is to replace the combustive, non-native vegetation with native plants. And the native plants tend to be lower in their ability to catch, you know, for catching fire. The habitat restoration of 75 acres this year in Powder Canyon has been completed and received final federal approval. The total habitat restoration in La Habra Heights is approximately 130 acres. Now, we talk about safety. The rangers monitor the activities on the hills and in the preserve. They are licensed peace officers as well. An example to protect the wildlife activity, trails do not allow motorized bikes, and that's monitored by the rangers. Also, the trails would become overgrown very quickly and potentially disappear if the staff and rangers were not actively monitoring the constant need for trimming of vegetation. The trails are closed when we have rain or potential fire danger. Enclosures are based on decisions made by the rangers, the Habitat staff, and the Habitat Board. Then, thirdly, we have the community outreach and education. The Habitat volunteers conduct two public hikes on Thursdays and Sundays, starting at the Black Walnut Trail, and all are welcome to go there. For information, go to the website, www.habitatauthority.org, or meetup.com/puentehillspreservethikers. The Habitat Authority staff was present at the city's firesafe workshop on March 3rd, and our chief ranger attended the multi-agency wildland fire drill last week. I encourage all residents to feel free to reach out to myself, Adam Nazaroff, or Ray Francis with any questions about the Habitat Authority. And more information, go to the website, habitatauthority.org, or special media sites, social media sites such as Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, or Meetup. Do you have any questions or anything you'd like me to?
First, I'm really glad you're picking up. That you're helping pick up the litter when people dump stuff? So if somebody sees something in the heights, can we send an email to someone and alert?
Yeah, you could send them to Ken.
Ken Hughes.
Ken Hughes.
Ken Hughes?
Yeah.
The ranger.
If you have, if you see them dumping things on the habitat, yeah, they have.
I have his information, Carol.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Hey, you're welcome.
So a couple of things. A, we can thank Andrea for sending us the updates. They started, you know, after the January 7 fires and some inquiries I had about what the Habitat was doing net new. I'm still interested in what's net new. I haven't seen it in her updates. These are kind of like just the normal situational updates. I'm also really interested in understanding, I appreciate the work the Habitat does, and I see that they're cutting down trees and they're clearing brush. My question is, how are they determining with their very limited budget what the right tree is to cut, what the right brush is to cut that reduces the risk the most? And I've asked that question now several times, and I still have not gotten an answer from the Habitat, and I think it's something that we really, as a city, need to understand is.
I can research that for you.
Yeah, so I've been asking about, and I'd like for our fire marshal to review the risk-based approach that the Habitat is taking to manage their land. And I really would like our fire marshal to review that and provide input in it before they start executing on it. So if, I've asked for it a couple times, and it would be good for, not, not to you, not to you, Catherine, but as a representative of the.
I'm a person who has a big voice in this.
Yeah, so as our representative on CTAC.
Old equipment.
Yeah, as our representative on CTAC, if you could take that back and say, hey, I presented to the council, they were very appreciative of the updates, but they would really like to understand going forward.
How do you choose the trees that you have, the areas that you are, and you want to have more involvement with the fire marshal?
Well, what I'd like them to do, what's, the specific word is risk. So I'd like for them to understand, I'd like for us to understand how they're going to develop a risk-based approach for managing that land, especially as it pertains to brush clearance. And then, I'd like, I'd really like for them to partner with our fire marshal to make sure that we're in alignment with, yes, those are the, those are the risks that we're seeing. That's where your limited funds should go to, to provide the greatest protection for our residents.
And sort of have, or the interface, the city does this, what's the Habitat doing for this part?
Yeah, I'll, I'll send you, I'll send you a note.
Yes, I can do you.
So that when you go back to CTAC, you can bring La Habra Heights concerns to that.
And you know I can make a lot of noise. People know that.
Yes.
Okay.
Kathy, we have a, we have a handout from February 3rd email with this map on it. I can't tell from looking at the map what I'm looking at. I don't even know where it is. Is there a way we could designate roads or something that would give us an idea of where these clearance are? I mean, this is a large spectrum. I guess this is the entire preserve?
Yes, it is.
So from our perspective, from my perspective, I can't. You've done a lot of tree clearing, you've done some restoration. It would be better if there was a clearer picture and it was more focused on, so we could figure out how it fits our topography.
Okay.
So if you take that back, that would be good?
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the Habitat?
I think we can do the vector update.
Okay.
Thank you.
During the season, disease transmission due to mosquito bites is low. The summer season is when we have the greatest potential for transmission of diseases like dengue fever, chikungunya, Zika, West Nile virus, and yellow fever. Vector Control would like to come and visit the city council to give a presentation. Summer is the high season, so early spring would be ideal for people to be reminded of good habits before the mosquito season begins. Mosquitoes don't fly very far from their water sources, so if you don't have any standing water anywhere and you have a lot of mosquitoes, maybe your neighbors do. So Vector Control does have door hangers to educate neighborhoods. And you can also call Vector Control, and they'll send out the technician to find out where are these sources, you know, knock on doors and so forth. You know, join the mosquito watch program. You can learn to create safer neighborhoods, reduce mosquito threats, and prevent mosquito bites, and enjoy the outdoors again. There are programs and resources for schools, like the mosquito SWAT lab, flyers, and information that can be posted, and they have a site to download information for anyone who's interested. Are you concerned about your pond as a breeding ground? The Vector Control technician can come out and ask, assess the situation, and give you suggestions on how to control potential mosquito breeding. And if you're interested in mosquito fish, give the Greater LA Vector Control District, not Orange County, but Greater LA Vector Control District a call, and you can also ask for the BGI donuts for control in the water. Prevention is key for the control of the mosquito-borne diseases. The diseases mosquitoes carry can potentially be life-threatening. Creating good habits and removing their water source habitats will reduce the risk of having any mosquitoes with diseases from breeding, and thus making a safer environment for all. In response to the persistent nuisance and disease threat by a city's mosquitoes, and I wanted to make the reminder, it's the female who bites you and has the meal with you, not the male. So Vector Control has been releasing sterilized, non-biting male mosquitoes into a pilot area to reduce the mosquito population. The female will mate with them and create like the 100 to 300 eggs that are non-fertile, thus creating no offspring. This will significantly reduce future mosquito populations without the use of pesticides. And so far, the data has been very positive in results, and we're at a point where it's time to expand the area for the release of these sterile males. So this, it's called the SIT technique, and I think this is going to be the future for control of the future mosquitoes. So please, please visit the website, glamosquito.org for more information, or call the Vector Control for information. That would be the information for that. Any questions?
I do represent, by the way, La Habra Heights on their Board of Trustees. So La Habra Heights is always in the house when I'm there. Have one of them getting any of the sterile mosquitoes?
They're, they're in the process now of deciding where they're going next. They had this, this one area because it was more confined, like, the mosquitoes tend to be in the area, and they would go and, and collect and see what, how many non-sterile females were created. Right now, they need to expand the program, so they're in the process of making the labs larger so they can, we're actually, we're very efficient in the sense that we're actually creating our own mosquitoes at this time. And so, I mean, in the sense, we get them and we sterilize them. So we don't create them, no. But yeah, that isn't, to me, it's an exciting area because it's not going to affect humans except for reducing our exposure to them. Any other?
Kathy, thank you so much for your time volunteering on both of those, both of those boards and for the work that you do there. And I'll, I'll shoot you a quick note. You don't have to remember all the stuff.
I was going to sit down and write it down anyways.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I only have one card. I don't know if there's anyone else that wants to make any public comment, but I just have one card from Glenn. Okay, Stephen. Let me do Glenn, and then we'll.
Good evening, council members, staff, consultants, public. My name's Glenn Shepherd, live on Hacienda Road, La Habra Heights. I have submitted a letter with attachments to you. Hopefully, you have that document. I just wanted to go over a few points with you. Excuse me. Allergy season. For the past four years, the city's been dealing with the various laws regarding the state's de facto takeover of the local planning process. The latest struggle involves the sixth cycle of the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or RENA, R-H-N-A. You're currently seeking to get approval of your March 2025 RENA submittal. If not approved, or you do not carry out all of the proposed actions included in that submittal, the state will basically be taking over the planning process in this city. In the legislative session that just started, more bills are being considered to further take away local control of the planning process. Check out SB 79 by Weiner, for instance, that's Senator Weiner. To stop this takeover, we, the people, need to put a proposition on the ballot and vote to restore local control. There's only one group that I'm aware of that is promoting such an approach, that is Our Neighborhood Voices, also known as ONV. Their draft initiative would restore local control to cities and counties. SCAG, which I believe the city is a member of, Southern California Association of Governments, endorses ONV and the mission to restore local control. I've attached the draft ONV initiative to the letter I've submitted to you, and a list of endorsers to the letter. I ask that you review the materials, visit the ONV's website, perhaps contact some of the endorsers for their views. Then, I ask you to bring forward an action declaring La Habra Heights supports the objectives of a proposed initiative to take back local control. Further, I ask that you, as individuals, declare to ONV your endorsement of ONV's local control initiative. You'll see there are many, many leaders, public leaders, who have done so. They're not representing their city, only themselves, but they have endorsed the initiative. I've also attached this letter, URESO 2020-36, that was approved by you in October of 2020, the title of which reads in part, "A Resolution Expressing Support for Actions to Further Strengthen Local Democracy, Authority, and Control." It appears that this, based on the wherethes in this resolution, you were specifically targeting the loss of local control. So I know that two of you were signatories to that document. Hopefully, we can have another one. Again, we need to take back local control. Thanks for your time, and also thanks for the sacrifices you make representing "We the People."
Thank you, Glenn.
Sure.
Stephen Black in Citron Road. A few things, we debatement. One of your agenda items tonight is approving 1.6 million approximately for a roads project. The city's residents have spent millions of dollars on five road projects so far, which includes clearing back dirt and slough that's come down, covering the roads and shrinking them up to four or five feet, shrunk the width of the roads. Part of brush clearance is for people to remove the dirt surrounding their property from the street, and that's very important, especially for the roads that have already been done, or else we're going to be back in the same situation with the roads narrowed by dirt. Next is, you do have that 2223 project for completion. I sent you an email about some items that appear not to have been done, that were going to be deducted from the payment. I can't tell without seeing the change order if the deductions were made, but they were supposed to be deducted for berms that weren't done according to the plan. And also a road green view that had about 200 feet that was missed. Next is the homeless Measure A item, where the city's getting roughly $35,000 a year, which you weren't getting before. One of the state mandates is homeless shelter, but the last five, or however many they did, homeless counts in zero people in La Habra Heights. But it is still a threat, we don't know, that maybe some homeless might come, and then what do you do with them? The city of Whittier has a homeless shelter and wraparound services. It'd be worth investigating, talking to them, and seeing if you can, like, buy a slot or two with that $35,000, knowing that some years, maybe most years, they'll get the money not if they do anything, but we won't have to find someplace to build a homeless shelter here. And then finally, just listening to what Kathy and the mayor were talking about, Powder Canyon, power to risk management. to Canyon, power to risk management is the city side of the equation. I don't know what, you work with them on that, but the, the main risk for fire in Power to Canyon is not brush, it's people. If there's no people, there's no fires. So I had mentioned before, the city could do things like close uh, Fullerton Road and Skyline Drive along Power to Canyon during red flag days, so people can't get into Power to Canyon from those two adjacent roads. And then, you know, power lines have caused fires, I don't know the conditions of the lines, but that's something the city could look at too. But it's not just brush clearance, it's people management. Keep people out, there's not going to be any fires. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Any other public comments? Okay, uh, committee comments? No committee comments tonight. Any council comments?
Okay, um, I'll, I'll just make one. On April fourth, uh, the mayors of La Habra, um, Whittier, and um, and La Habra Heights, uh, did take a tour of the city, um, with L A County Fire, uh, their lead forester and one of their deputy chiefs. It was very informative. You'll, you'll, you'll appreciate the fact that um, the difference between the cities is so significant, um, when you look at housing density in Whittier and La Habra, and the wildland interface compared to this city. Um, we, we have the benefit of not having the same density, however, um, we do have a significant, significantly larger exposure to the Habitat than the other two cities have. So, again, I, I plan on working with our fire marshal and working with the Habitat. Steve and I hear you on the people thing, I've been after the Habitat to, um, address when they close the Habitat. It's a little too linear for my liking. Um, it requires a red flag day, and those, those, you, you're already at such a high, high-risk level by that time, um, that it's probably not, it's probably too late. Um, so, just wanted to let people know that we, we're continuing, as a council, continuing to look at the wildfire risk issue and continuing to work with the Habitat in, in addressing that as we go forward, but also with the adjoining cities, um, to address it. And I know that the mayor of Whittier was very interested in, in working with La Habra Heights to address the, uh, and as he said in the April eighth Whittier Daily News, that the Habitat poses a threat to the city of Whittier. So that was pretty much a quote from him after he completed this tour, so, um, just wanted to follow up on that.
I don't know how practical it is, but maybe Mr. Blackden's suggestion that the city look at closing Skyline and a couple of other areas during high fire danger might be a good option, although it would take manpower.
We, we, yeah, I mean, we should really work to coordinate with the, with the Habitat. The Habitat was closed, they closed the access, then there would be, you know, we wouldn't have to take that action. Anyway, I just wanted to, to follow up with that, there was an April eighth article in the Whittier Daily News, um, that was fairly, um, fairly good article on, on this topic.
I can give the city manager's report if you're ready. I just wanted to thank the Improvement Association, this past, uh, this past weekend, they held their annual Easter egg hunt. I know last year was canceled because we got some rain on that, that particular Saturday, um, but it was a very nice day out there on Saturday, so, um, I saw a few people from a distance, but never really got, uh, you know, I saw councilman Reseppfleter out there, and Mayor Paspisa, but by the time I made it over to your areas, he has moved to another area, so, uh, but it was a lot of people out at the park, and so it was good to see everybody out, kids having fun, and a big showing from the Improvement Association. Um, fire department as well, made sure the Easter Bunny made it to the park on time. Um, so they had a nice little assist from the fire department, and firefighters hung around for a little while, let the kids take pictures and climb up in the engine and, and have a little bit of fun out there. Um, we do have a couple of other events that are coming up, um, coming up here at the end of the month, on April twenty-sixth is the next quarterly cleanup, um, so that will be at the park, starting at eight A M, uh, is quarterly cleanup. So this is bulky items, green waste, um, no hazardous waste though, so no like fluorescent light bulbs, batteries, um, and motor oil and paint. That one typically is held in July and August, we do the household hazardous waste event, which we're trying to coordinate right now. Um, but also on the twenty-sixth, it will be our next, uh, Hacienda Road cleanup. Um, so if you're interested in attending that one, it's, it is early in the morning. Uh, we meet here about six forty-five in the morning, and we go out and walk Hacienda. You can email John Dominguez, he helps coordinate that one, and you can email him at beautifylhh@gmail. Um, and it's always a great event to, to go out and pick up some litter along Hacienda, um, in conjunction with that quarterly cleanup. And then in May, May third, from eight to ten thirty, there'll be compost giveaway at the park, so, uh, compost coming up at the park, um, so that will be, um, on May third from eight to ten thirty. They do ask you to bring your own containers, um, for the compost, but uh, get some good clean compost from that event there. That's all I have. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
All right, city attorney.
No report.
Okay. Community development.
Really, the only thing to highlight here is, in the month of March, the building department was incredibly busy. Um, the building permits that we do every month, we had twenty-five permits issued, um, but all in all, they issued seventy-two permits, um, in the month of March for building, so, uh, quite, quite a few permits out the door. Um, there's a little bit over a hundred thousand dollars in, in permit fees that went out, uh, went out the door and came in from March. Um, so there's been a combination of people moving through projects, people doing some work, also code enforcement as well, you see them out, our code enforcement officers, leaving stop works and getting people in the door to pull permits, um, so they've just been incredibly busy this month for permits. That's all I have.
Thank you, Rafferty. Fire chief.
Uh, good evening. I'm happy to report that we had a very successful, another successful brush drill just recently. Uh, the partnership with our neighboring departments is increasing. We added two outside agencies, Orange County Fire Authority and Brea. Fullerton was also invited, uh, Area E greatly participated in it. Last year, we had sixty engines, this year we had a hundred and six. So it's, uh, it's very interesting that the dynamics are increasing just because of the recent fires that we've had. So we're looking at, uh, all sorts of, uh, training avenues so that we can continue to provide the best service possible, and to also be prepared in the event that something happens. The only issue that we had where people were a little concerned about the helicopters flying over, but I think that was to be expected, and, uh, we were very successful in utilizing our, uh, helotank. Uh, people, the members involved were very impressed by it, and it worked perfectly. So outside of that, uh, we just have, uh, the monthly report. We are on par, we did have, uh, uh, start tracking calls that are in the unincorporated area of Los Angeles County called La Habra Heights Island, so we had three calls in that area. And then we continue to, uh, uh, live up to the standard and provide, uh, good service to our community, and we're working with our partners to help them in the areas that are hard for them to reach, like the island. And I will defer the, uh, updates on the brush clearance to our fire marshal.
So in terms of brush clearance, the twenty twenty-four brush clearance season commenced on May first, twenty twenty-four, and will conclude on April thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. Brush clearance and vegetation management is continual year-round, it's a continual year-round program, and I know that there's a common misconception in La Habra Heights that we only, uh, start on May first, and then, uh, just a few months shy of that, we typically conclude, you know, around October, but unfortunately, that is not the case, and I think that it's ever more important to highlight that due to recent events. All parcels in the city shall remain clear at all times. Uh, one thousand seventy-seven, one thousand seventy-six inspections have been completed to date. Uh, copies of the brush clearance program guidelines is available at the city's website and at City Hall. And, uh, just for some extra added information, preparations are going well for the upcoming brush clearance season. An employment ad was posted on our website, uh, for a part-time seasonal fire inspector, and we have received quite a few qualified applicants. I'm holding interviews for, uh, set applicants next week. We are also in the process of reviewing the applications to schedule new interviews. Okay. Um, one thing I'd also like to add is that, um, this is, this is going to be a challenging year. This is, uh, my first season as fire marshal, however, I am eager and I'm excited to get started as soon as possible. Um, I'm so eager that I actually started on these inspections on January sixth. Um, personally, I've conducted eighty-seven, and I've, uh, closed about fifty percent of those to date. Um, I'm looking for other avenues and other, uh, technological avenues, I should say, in how to conduct our, uh, brush inspections. I'm currently a member of the Fire Prevention Officers, uh, Southern California chapter, and I am very active in that, uh, community, I'm going, attending meetings very regularly in Anaheim down at North Net, which typically are all day once a month. Um, I'm also still managing and running the paramedic program concurrently, but, uh, in terms of the brush clearance, uh, season and the brush clearance program, I'm eager to really kick this into high gear because come May first, um, this is, it's going to be a marathon, not a sprint, but I'm going to treat it like a very long sprint. Any questions?
So, um, and it might be too early to ask this, but I know, um, earlier in the month, the new fire maps came out. Is that going to change any aspects of the brush clearance program?
I would say yes and no. What it's going to do is it's going to increase our A B thirty-eight inspections, um, our real estate transaction inspections, and it already has. Uh, the fire maps is a continual, ongoing, uh, discussion that I'm a part of with the Fire Prevention Officers, uh, organization, and that was about a four and a half hour in length topic last week, uh, followed by another two hours Zoom meeting the following day. Uh, we have a hundred and twenty days in total to get these fire maps ratified and, uh, placed into, uh, you know, our code. But essentially, um, May twenty, March twenty-fourth is when the initial fire maps, uh, came out for the rollout of phase four, which includes Los Angeles County. Uh, we're about, uh, what we're coming up on, um, our first benchmark, which is, uh, the first thirty days, that we actually had to have that reflected on our city website with a tab that is, that allows for public comment, which we are in the process of doing, in terms of adding the public comment tab, that'll take you straight to like in, uh, Fire Prevention Information, uh, Public Comment Portal. Uh, the next city council meeting, we should be revisiting another, uh, open public comment phase, and then, um, we should be ratifying them within a hundred and twenty days.
All right, thank you. Sir. Carus' report.
Good evening. Uh, we had two grand thefts to report incidents, one, uh, grand theft auto, two vehicle burglaries, one petty theft, one hit-and-run incident, one traffic collision, and one theft by false pretense. There were no residential burglaries for the month of March to report. With that in mind, just, um, be aware there is teams of criminals driving around in the area, especially in La Cienega Heights. Uh, if you see a suspicious vehicle, please call us, so we can investigate. That's all I have, thank you. And that's in La Cienega Heights, though.
I, I kind of didn't understand, there's teams of criminals?
Uh, burglars, we've, we've had a kind of a rash of burglaries up in La Cienega Heights. They're coming from outside the area, so it, it's easier to get to La Cienega Heights than it is to, uh, get to La Habra Heights, and that's probably why we're not seeing a rash of burglaries up here. Uh, and I also believe in high visibility patrols, so I tell my partners to, if they got free time, please come and roam the area. Sometimes just the visibility part, uh, gives them thought. Yeah, to go somewhere else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I'll move on to the consent calendar. Anyone want anything pulled? Have a motion?
Motion for consent calendar.
Second.
Ryan?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Norm?
Yes.
John Cheff. All right, uh, public hearing. I'll open the public hearing for the twenty twenty-five annual brush clearance program.
Thank you, mayor, I'll, I'll start out and then hand over to, to our fire marshal. Um, this is a continuation or a follow-up of our meeting we had back in February this year, um, where we began the process, uh, going through the legal notice and process for abatement of properties that have brush debris and other things, um, on the real properties that are public nuisances, um, as part of that, and that, um, at that meeting in February, council adopted resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero eight, um, that states the council's intention to order the city staff to cause the removal of such nuisances, and that public hearing shall be held on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, at six thirty P M in the council chambers to allow property owners to show cause as to why weeds, rubbish, refuse, and other combustible materials, and dirt and debris, and runoff from private property upon public roadway shall not be abated. Um, so this is the meeting for anyone who would like to protest our, our, uh, brush clearance program, for them to come forward and then speak in a public hearing related to this. Um, this, as you heard earlier, is a very important process, where we go through, we begin conducting inspections of properties to make sure that dead, diseased, or materials that are known to cause, uh, increases in fire danger are removed from properties. Um, so as part of that, I'll hand it back to Chief Jorgensen or fire marshal to talk a little bit more, touch again on some of the things he's going to highlight on his season this year as he's getting ready.
Yeah, some of the things that I would like to highlight and, uh, target are some of our major arteries in the city, Hacienda, the Castor Bean, uh, looks like some of the over, uh, the canopies that are overhanging throughout West Road, uh, some of the veins that, as I go along Res Road that I've already targeted, uh, La Floor, uh, one in particular, which, uh, the residents over there have done a phenomenal job at clearing, I want to add. I would also like to, uh, in working with code enforcement, I'm also looking at some of the problem, uh, structures, some of the problem, uh, parcels, I should say. But, uh, when I say problem parcel, some, you know, at code enforcement, you know, when they're looking at junk trash debris, that is inherently an issue, uh, with, you know, with fire danger as well, and not just brush clearance or vegetation management, it all coincides and it all kind of works interdependently. So, um, in working with code enforcement and working with, uh, Dave and Kevin, I'm definitely going to be targeting some of those problem areas, those, um, in particular, uh, individual structures, but really, it's, it's the major arteries, it's east, which I've, which has been, um, on my radar since I started in January, uh, and I've successfully been able to pretty much get, from what I can see, at least on the southern part of East Road up into the golf course from Hacienda, pretty good grasp of it. Um, and it's a lot of the veins that I'm seeing off Churchill, Skyline, uh, big five-acre parcel surrounding, um, uh, kind of encapsulating, uh, one of the residences up on Skyline, I targeted, uh, my first month out, and I'm happy to say that we got that whole thing cleared out. So it's going to be a continual process, uh, not only with that in particular parcel, but also with a lot of the other ones that I'm noticing as well. It's, it's, like I said, it's going to be a very long sprint for me, but I'm, I'm engaging and I'm, I'm looking forward to it. But Castor Bean, Castor Bean and Palm Franz, those are my arch nemesis.
Any questions for the chief, or, sorry, captain?
Well.
Promoted you, sorry.
I came down the back way today, so I drove from East Road down Hacienda to the City Hall, and- hall, and the weeds are already growing on the city property.
Right.
And we've had comments, and it seems to me, I don't know how it would work out. If, if we could keep the city property clean, that would sort of be a, a model for other people. I don't know if you control that or the city manager, but it might be worth looking into.
Yeah, I'll work with my constituents, and we'll make sure that we lead by example.
Maybe we could find a resident volunteer with a weed whacker that just is bored on the weekends. Thank you.
Of course.
City parcels are being scheduled for clearance right now.
They're being what?
Cleared, scheduled for clearance.
When?
This week.
Oh, okay, good. That's great. Set a good example.
Anything like me, you kind of want to let them grow a little bit and then?
Yeah.
Get them when they're mature so that?
Right, they're about that high now, so.
So let me go ahead and open up the public comment, any public comments on this? I know Stephen, you made a comment earlier about the road debris. Did you have additional on this?
Thank you, Stephen Blagman Citron Road. Yeah, Mayor Broten Engelhardt just mentioned something that reminded me, I sent you information about a governor's executive order about removing vegetation that is flammable, blocking exit routes. And there's the stream between east and west roads, starting from the park side going down to West Road, that's full of, I don't know what it is, bamboo, rundle, trees. That was all cleared out in 2009, and it's grown back. One of the problems with Keaton that cleared is you need stream bed alteration permit, but with the executive order, that expedites the process, and you can get that stream cleared out, but it would have to be done before the end of the year because that's when the executive order ends. Thank you.
Any other public comment? So I just want to foot stomp one thing that Captain Jorgensen mentioned, and I'm glad that he's addressing this. It's not just brush. It's clutter, it's junk, it's stuff that, you know, if there is a fire on a parcel, creates a non-defensible space and, and will allow that fire to propagate into another parcel. So, you know, I've said this a couple of times, brush clearance and, and the brush clearance program, and maybe we need to come up with a new term for it, really is a, you know, a fire threat abatement program.
The term is actually community risk reduction, and that is the, the term that every fire department is using, and it's not, it doesn't just apply to, to your point, Meripisvisa does not only apply to brush, it applies to all of the other ancillary components as well that propagate fire.
So I just want to make sure the residents understand, you know, it's going to look a little different going forward, and it has to look different because of just the threat that fire poses to our city. And I know, I know a couple of, of folks here have taken me up on this, but if you want to see, you know, just how devastating a fire could be, just go drive through Altadena. Just go, go drive from the 60 freeway north on Lake and just follow, just turn right or left on Altadena Drive and just drive through the city, look at, look at what has happened to that city. You know, Altadena is a special place. La Habra Heights is a very special place, at least to me. It's been my home for almost 30 years. I know a lot of people have lived here a long time, and I would be absolutely devastated if something like that happened here. So as residents of the city, you know, we owe it to each other to be very aggressive on these issues and take the recommendations of the fire marshal and his crew and, you know, work very diligently to get that done. I, I know, Captain, that you've been very willing to work with people and develop mitigation plans, so, you know, even if it's something that is net new to you this year, that you never had to do in the past, understand why. And if it's something that's, you know, you just can't get done in 30 days, then work with the captain on developing a mitigation criteria that you're willing to, to work with. Think of it like a, all of us have to pay taxes tomorrow, some of us have to work on a, a payment plan with the IRS because we owe a little bit more than we thought. So, anyway, any other public comment, any other comments from council?
I really like the addition of clearing road debris that's blocking the side of the road. I mean, one of the things we learned as we went through the Reno numbers were we could never, ever evacuate the city safely. It only gets worse if the roads, people are allowing their upper, upper, hills above the roads to road down onto the, onto our road and further block the road. It's, it's, so I think the adding, adding of the road debris is a really good addition. I, it's probably going to be tough because a lot of people don't even retain those yet, but maybe we can start to change some minds if we just make them, clean them up even, you know, it's, it's, it's a good start on that. That's, evacuation is going to be tough for us no matter what, but I'm glad we're starting on that very much.
All right, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and do I have a motion on this?
Move to authorize the fire department to initiate inspections and proceed with brush clearance as necessary.
Second?
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Norm?
Yes.
And John Cheff. All right, that's the end of the public hearing. Move on to administrative items, item 17.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This one is related to the new Ohio severity, fire severity zone maps. The state fire marshal did just come out with those maps. So every area, they have completed all the way across California now, have updated maps. Ours just came out at the end of, the end of March there. Included in your report is the new map. It has changed a little bit for La Habra Heights, and we do also have some areas that fall into just the high and the moderate zone as well, which we didn't have before. But there is a little more information about this. There is, if you go on our city's website, in the news tab, there's a little news story with the click to read more, and that will take you to a separate page that has a little more information about it as well. And as, as Chief Jorgensen said earlier, through the process, we do have to adopt the, the new fire zone maps, and so that public outreach and getting the map out there is the first step of it. So this is one of those ways to get it out there, and we'll be doing a little more outreach for it here and then bringing it back to the council to consider at a future date. That's all I have.
Yeah, and pursuant to the law, we have to adopt at a minimum what Cal Fire put together. If we want to add areas to it, we can, if there's evidence that supports such, but that is the limit of your authority. You must approve this at a minimum, you can add more if you want, if you think it's necessary. And it does require, for areas within certain zones, it does increase building requirements and standards that they must comply with.
And I understand, chief, you're going to bring that to us next month, correct?
That's correct.
Your recommendations on?
Yes. Yeah, some of the issues that have already come up with many other communities, for instance, Brea, and talking to their fire marshal, as well as speaking with fire marshals of other districts, is some of the, kind of the mixture areas where it's like in the, within the map, one, you know, one parcel in particular may, may be under the very high fire severity zone and fall under, say, a local response area like LRA. Because as it stands, with Cal Fire's mandate, only LRA or local response area, very high fire severity zone in the red, is mandated to have that defensible space, whereas the LRA in the high or the moderate does not. If it's SRA or state response area land, the high and the very high require the defensible space, but the moderate still does not. But the point is, is that regardless of what dirt it's in, if we have very high fire severity zone, but only a portion of it, say like a quarter of it is in the red, but yet, as an example, say it's moderate or higher moderate that does not require that type of defensible space, but only that sliver does, the recommendation from every city that I've spoken with, from Newport Beach to, you know, Brea and all of the other, all of the other cities that I've spoken with recently, we are all in agreement that if just a portion requires very high fire severity zone, then the entire thing should also be held at that standard.
I'll piggyback on that one a little bit. When we adopt the building code standards, we do take an extra step through that process and make additional findings to designate the entire city as high severity fire zone. So those building standards are in place across the city currently. So even though like old maps, new maps, or when we adopt the building code cycles, we do take that extra step to, to deem the entire city as very high severity fire zone and require everybody to meet those, to meet those building code requirements for high severity fire zone as, because when you look at the map, there's not a lot of difference between like Reposado and Dorothea, or Skyline and Dorothea, all those areas. So we, we do take that extra step, and we'll probably continue as we move forward to make it similar across the board. That way, there's no confusion as to where is in high severity fire zone and what is not as far as like building code and brush clearance requirement standards.
So, so we're pretty confident then that our building codes represent the Cal Fire recommendations?
Currently, our build, our current building code requirements that we have in place today designates the entire city as high severity fire zone. So as far as like insurance requirements, when people are going to do insurance, these maps will affect your insurance rates. But as far as like building requirements, we do designate the entire city as high severity fire zone. Within those requirements and the building code, there are some exemptions for properties built before 2007 that allow for some exemptions, exemptions to some of those requirements that are still in there. We're talking to the building official right now about looking at those requirements and those exemptions because we will be adopting new building code standards here at the end of the year.
Yeah, I'd really want to make sure that as we, as we go forward, we're looking at Cal Fire recommendations, also ensuring that we look at, through a very different lens when we give setback modifications. Keeping that defensible space around homes is really critical, and I think we probably need to look at giving our planning folks some guidance on what we might find acceptable there. Because I know we've given out exceptions in the past, and having that defensible space around homes is just going to become a very critical issue going forward. Okay, so I don't think we need a motion on this.
Well, I, I have a question, just, just out of curiosity, what's the reason why the maps are changing over time? Is it because the criteria is changing, or is the environment, the actual brush and so forth, changing?
From my understanding, it's because the criteria is changing. It's the, you know, whether you want, I mean, some of the, what I've been told and some of the things that I'm learning, it, you know, environmental factors are taken into account, depending on which side of the aisle that you sit on. But at the end of the day, I know it's, it really just comes down to the criteria is changing.
Thank you. I was curious about that. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
So I don't think we need a motion, oh, sorry, Brian?
No, I was just commenting. I know a lot of residents have had trouble with obtaining fire insurance, and hopefully this will help because it's, some of the city has gotten out of that high fire hazard area. So have you heard anything for any residents or anything about insurance and those type of things?
No, not, not anything related to that yet.
But this is all on the website, so we can, hopefully this will at least help a lot of the residents with the, so they don't have to go into the state pool.
It depends. We'll see where the insurance industry goes with the?
So I am told, I don't know if it's true, that insurance companies have their own algorithms, formulas, things, magic dust, which they look at, and they don't actually look at this, and they look more at risk models. This isn't purely a risk model. But yeah, if you're not in it, I assume that helps, right? So.
Reduction, I would hope the reduction helps residents with their insurance.
Right.
All right, any other comments from the council? Okay, so I think May is when we will be presented with the different, additional information, and if I understand the chief correctly, we'll need to adopt the actual fire map itself.
That's what I understand as well. We don't have to adopt the ordinance until just under 120 days.
All right. Measure A.
So the county voters have recently approved ballot Measure A, which is a local solutions fund related to homeless issues and funding and, and ways to deal with that. Through this, this new tax measure, it, it sort of replaces what was Measure H and puts in a different category of looking at how the funding is collected and how the funding is used, with a larger emphasis on that money actually going out and being used to benefit the homeless part of it. As part of it, there is a breakdown to where all the cities in the county and the county areas do receive a portion of the funds. So for us, it's roughly $35,000 a year what we're receiving in funding. We've been going through this one, it came out relatively quickly, and as we are looking at the funding sources and how the county is going to allocate the funds, because the county is the one that is collecting and then allocating those funds. At the moment, the way the county is allocating the funds, at least for this year, is that there are 17 cities that have direct agreements with the county. They will receive their portions of the funds. All of the other areas will go into the local COGS that oversee those areas. So for us, that would be that, our funding would technically go to the COG, which would be the Gateway Cities COG, which is in the area that we, we reside within, that, that COG's sphere of influence. And then from there, that COG would be looking at how to spend that money within the region of that COG area, and it'd be submitting work orders and plans and reports back to the county related to how that funding is spent. We've been looking at ways, because we are not members of the Gateway Cities COG, so we have been looking at if there's a way for us to receive those funds from the county and were passed through the COG. I don't have a final answer on that right now. I have been working a little bit closer with the city of Whittier. I mean, they're interim city manager on, they are doing a similar thing, trying to, to be able to utilize, as, as Mr. Blagman talked about earlier, they, they do have homeless shelter and wraparound services that they provide in the city of Whittier, and they self-fund for a few million dollars a year into that, that aspect of it. So they are also trying to find a way to receive those fundings, sources themselves, so they could utilize it for their shelter. We will see is the, as they are trying to meet with the county right now as well to try to figure out that aspect of it. But my recommendation at the moment would be, our funding is going to the COG, so we'll get incorporated to how the COG spends that money. If we are able to obtain those funds that would get distributed, dispersed, I think a good way for the council and the city to spend that funds would be to join the city of Whittier and their homeless shelter and use those funds to, to supplement and work towards the, the good work they do over there through their shelter, which is local to our area and would benefit us in any future needs.
So is there, is there limitations on how the fund can be used? My question, I guess, is, we don't really have an outreach program in the city. Our outreach program is Hector, our, our deputy. So can, can the funds be used to, to supplement that cost?
It's very specific. I don't believe we can utilize it through like the sheriff's department for their outreach as to the way it's, it could be done.
Okay. And is, in, in your conversations with Whittier and the assistant city manager, or the interim city manager, are they willing, do they seem like a willing partner here to, if, if we were to get control of the funds, what would that buy us with them? Would that buy us a bed? Would it buy us two beds? What does it, what does it get us?
We haven't talked about how much it would, might buy us in the shelter, but do seem to be willing to, to partner with us on that aspect of it.
Okay. Any other questions on this?
It's a little off point, but why in, why in heaven's name are we in the Gateway Cities COG? Can you explain that? That makes no sense to me at all.
It's just the way the, the COGS are laid out. We're sort of on this side of the hill, so we, we are in that.
It's the side of a hill, so we get, we get to be bunched up with Lakewood and Long Beach and, and all of those folks who have totally different rules than we do.
Yeah, I mean, the, the city was a member of the Gateway Cities COG a number of years back, but I think at the time, we sort of pulled out of it because they were very heavily focused on like transportation, like multimodal transportation-related issues, which didn't impact us very much. So at that time, I think is when the city sort of stepped out of the COG. We probably, as a city, are more aligned with what like the San Gabriel Valley council governments is, kind of works on and is, but like jurisdictionally, like just their area maps, how the COGS are, are broken out, we're in the Gateway Cities.
Yeah. Thanks.
Do we know who assigns the COGS?
I do not know who assigns the areas to the COGS.
Oh, we might look into. I know we voted not to spend $10,000, remember? I don't know if you were on the council. I don't know if you were on the council. That's the fee to join.
Any other discussion? All right. Item 19, the housing element.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the annual report for the housing element. So this attached to your report, you'll see a very large spreadsheet there. So as part of that spreadsheet, it sort of documents what we have done housing wise, coming in and out the door and all of those things over the past year. So some of the sheets in this form are utilized, some we do not utilize, but it just kind of, it tallies up what we have out there, what comes in the door, what goes. So right now, like table A is all of the stuff that has been submitted, that is in currently the, the planning process for either new housing or ADUs. Those ones are assigned to an income category. Typically, our ADUs that we see come in the door are related to either for family members or elderly parents. So we've placed those into the like very low income, non-deed restricted category for those new housing that are being built or being built by private people for their own residence. So those typically fall within the, the above moderate category for the housing stock that is built for us. Table B is units that are permitted by affordability, kind of shows you over the years. So this is a form that we get from HCD, so it isn't editable. So it doesn't include any data points from 2021 or 2022, but you can kind of see in 2023, 2024, those are the housing units that were permitted in those timeframes. Table 2A is a larger one that shows things that are in the planning process, also what is in the building plan check process and what has building permits for it and what has received a certificate of occupancy for that one. Table C is for sites selected for rezoning to accommodate shortfalls in housing. We did not select any sites to rezone in 2024. Table D is some of the programs. This one is always hard. We do not have a certified housing element. So these are some of the programs that we have worked on in our past housing elements that get incorporated and just a little bit of information related to it. Table E are commercial developments that are receiving development bonuses. We don't have any commercial property. Table G is locally owned lands for housing elements, inventory that have been sold, leased or otherwise disposed of. We did not lease or sell or dispose of any properties for housing in 2024. Table J, same thing. These are student housing. We do not have any student housing in the Heights. And the last one is just sort of a summary of the year's events. So if next year's annual report will probably look much different than it is today because in 2025, we're going to be completing some rezonings. We are going to have a lot of new housing programs. So there are the program that we, any report we set to submit next year will be vastly different than it is today. So this one went to the planning commission at their last meeting and it's recommended that the city council discuss the 2024 housing element annual progress report, accept the report and direct staff to submit it to the state. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Any questions? I take it we need a motion for the submission. Okay.
Move that we accept the 2024 housing element annual progress report and direct staff to file the report with the California Department of Housing and Community Development.
Second?
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Make a note that he stepped out. And John says yes. All right. Item 20.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Item 20 before you is the Zone 4, Hacienda-Skyline-Drove project notice of completion. So back in August of 2024, the city council awarded a contract on X paving for the 2022-23 street improvement project. And construction commenced on the beginning of October and was completed at the end of March. And there were a total of two change orders as part of that. One was pavement striping modifications. In the process of laying out the striping, there was a need to make some striping changes, which you can see out mostly along Hacienda Road between Skyline and Canal de Sombre.
For the driveways? For the driveways?
Yes. The area is going to match the paving, the striping that we will be doing as part of the Avocado Crest Signal project. So that was a bit of a change there because as we were laying out the loops to be cut at Skyline and West Road, we noticed that those lanes are going to be shifting and where the loops would be cut for the old striping and the new striping wouldn't be in the same location. So instead of having to cut two sets of street detection loops, we elected to make those changing, striping changes ahead of schedule. So we restriped that area to the new plan versus what was out there existing to make sure that the loop detectors for the signals were cut in the appropriate location so we wouldn't have to go make another cut of those loop detectors and move them around as part of it. And then the last one is bid adjustment items that we do as, as the quantities versus actual what's put down on the street versus what is bid, just the mashup of what was over and under on those projects for those ones. So original project was awarded $1,369,000. The total bid item adjustments were $30,136.21, which would bring the project to within the limits of the contingency for the project. So the recommendation is for the city council to approve change orders one and two in the amount of $30,136.21, accept the 22-23 street improvement project as complete and direct the city clerk to file the notice of completion with LA County Recorder. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
So I know that Stephen sent some pictures in of concerns. Are we going to address those before we move forward? Because it looked like there was work that either was done incorrectly or needed to get changed, especially like with the burms and the construction of the burms?
We did, we did receive a credit for the burms. So the burms that went in were not the burms that were spec. So the striping changes, that's change order one was a much larger amount. Through that, we negotiated the credit back to reduce the cost of the striping for that one as change order one for that, the work that wasn't done per plan.
Any other questions?
I just have a question. Have you been able to thoroughly review his email to make sure that this complies with what we're approving tonight? Or do we need to go back and review this whole thing?
No, we've, we've been through it. We've looked at it. Roads Committee as well have, have reviewed.
All of these issues that he had brought up?
Yeah.
They've all been reviewed by the Roads Committee?
And city engineer as well.
And we've gotten credit for some of that?
Yes.
So you're satisfied bringing this whole thing together tonight?
I am, yes.
Okay.
Well, it falls to us then to probably agendize a discussion about why our inspectors missed non-compliance with the existing plans. And that's, I mean, if we put the, if we put the dollar item aside for the moment for putting in the wrong burms, then we pay these people money to inspect according to plans. If Stephen's right and they have not done so, then they're going to have to answer for that in some fashion, other than just, it's not going under the table, I can assure you. So let's agendize a, a discussion, let's agendize you to just give us a report on how do they respond to that? I'd like a response from them that tells us why they missed that. It just literally shouldn't have been missed. And agendize it for the return in May.
So your motion is the table is till May then?
Well, I think we should approve the change order.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I have.
I think it's more around the, and I think one of the Roads Committee members came to me with the same concern about what are, I mean, we're paying the inspector a lot of money to be out there and he should be out there, she should be out there in real time when they're doing this work. And again, he, the Roads Committee member was just, I mean, he's in this business. It was mystified as to how our inspector did not catch the fact that the wrong berm design was being used.
I would have moved that.
Hold on one second.
I have just a question.
Carol's got a question.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so the 5801, the striping, does that come out of the grant money we got for the signal?
So the striping, there is striping in general for the project. The change we did was just for the striping in Hacienda. We are working a credit with the striping contractor that is going to be doing the whole entire Hacienda work right now because there's a separate project and a separate pot of money.
I don't think I understood your answer.
The striping that is in there does not get paid from the grant funds for the signal and the restriping on Hacienda.
But we're going to get?
We are working with.
Some more striping?
We are working with that contractor that will be doing the Hacienda Road restriping project on a credit for that portion of it that has already been done.
So if we get a credit, since it's a grant, what will we get? Extra striping or something? Or will he pay us money back or?
No. So our cost of construction is probably going to be slightly more than our total grant funds for all of that work on Hacienda.
And then the other items, I don't think were part of the grant. No? Okay. Thank you.
All right, Greg. You were going to make a motion.
So you're asking us to do three things, to approve the change orders, to accept the street improvement project as complete and to direct the city clerk to file a notice of completion with LA County, which ends the project. My, this isn't an informed, this is just informed discussion. I, I don't know that we can say the project's complete until we've resolved the question of inspection. Maybe, I don't have a problem generically with a change order, but I do, I don't like to end this project on a sour note. And to me, that's still a sour note. So is there any reason why we couldn't just approve the, not that everyone wants to do it, the, the change order, but not your other two requests until next month when we have some responses to why we missed this stuff?
So all really, making a determination that a project is complete does is set a date for people to file stop work notices, right? So if the project is actually complete, and it is, the law is going to deem it complete anyway, but this gives us a date certain by which to limit material men and subcontractors for filing claims against the money. And the only way to effectuate that is by recording it with the county. So the last two items are really more self-preservation than any real use of the word complete. So the issues you're looking at in legal world have nothing to do with these two last items, just so you know.
And it also sets a date for their retention. We hold a portion of the contractors' funds. And so that would, they have 45 days before we can pay that retention from the data they're recording of the, the notice of completion. I think your question more lies with the inspection side of it, which doesn't affect the notice of completion. Notice of completion is solely for the contractor. So unless you wanted us to go back and tell the contractor to ruin or replace all the burms.
Yeah, I guess what I'd like to do is resolve each of those issues, even if we approve and complete the project, so we start the material lanes timing, even if we do that, I still don't want to give up this project is done as in my mind. It ain't done in my mind. It's not done until we find out why the burms weren't done correctly and why they weren't inspected correctly. And if we're doing a credit for some, from somebody, I want us to pursue that. So I'm happy to move the recommendation forward, but I, but I want to keep the, the issue alive for our further evaluation. I'm just afraid that if we close this off, it disappears, that's all.
I think we can agendize an item on our, our inspector's performance. So maybe it's a performance review of our, our, our roads inspector. And we can just agendize that and we can just do an overall, an overall agenda item on that topic. Because I know, like I said, I know there's some concerns from the Roads Committee itself about the performance of this, this company and, you know, the work they've been doing and the costs they've been charging, so.
I think in the past, like three projects ago, the inspector supervision was a separate contract from the construction. Is there any reason they have to, they can't be sep, I know, and in that one, I think we sent it back because there was real question about why the inspector, oh, I remember what happened was the, the cost of materials went up 20% and then the inspector just raised his fee 20% because he was getting a certain percentage of, and I know in that case, we separated them, as I recall.
That one, we went back to fine tune the amount of time and hours that were in that proposal for inspection and construction management services. We have in the past separated the inspection and construction management services to separate That was done in the past, yes.
Just from my perspective, the inspection side of this is completely different than the legal term of notice of completion. But whatever you guys want to do.
I'm satisfied. I could move, move the recommendation for acceptance.
Okay, yeah, let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and approve the completion and like I said, we'll, we'll agendize as separate. Because I think there is, I think, I think there's a, we heard one person today talk about in public comment. I know I've heard other comments, so I think it would be something that at least some of members of our Roads Committee would like to come in and discuss with us, so. All right. Did you, did you make a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll second that then.
All right, Brian? Brian?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Norm?
Yes.
John's, yes. All right. Item 21.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This one before you is from the Fire Department. So it's acceptance of a 2025 Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation grant award.
I think you skipped 21.
Did I? Oh, sorry.
No worries.
Moving ahead too fast. These are requests for opposition letters to a couple of pending state legislations. We did hear from a resident earlier about SB 79 from Senator Weiner out there related to transit oriented development, which would allow transit agencies to develop properties outside of the control or oversight of the jurisdictions that they lay within. So the League of California Cities does monitor those bills as they move through the legislature and periodically asks cities to either send letters of opposition or letters of support. They have recently reached out with two, one related to housing and one related to homeless and civil penalties related to homelessness. So there are two draft letters attached to the staff report, one that is in opposition to SB 79, which is the transit related development. And the other one is SB 36634, related to homelessness and doing and having ordinances and/or requirements for civil penalties related to homelessness. So there are two draft letters there. It's just for the council to consider if you want to authorize the mayor to sign and staff to transmit those letters of opposition to the state.
Any discussion, any concerns with us signing these? They seem very consistent with what we've heard in public comment, both at this meeting but also during the workshop on the housing element. Any concerns? Okay. Item 22.
Get to the good one. So the Fire Department did apply for a 2025 Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation grant and was awarded the grant. So they had applied for 10 cents, 10 cents of PPE turnouts for Fire Department and were awarded that. So it's a great thing for the Fire Department to be able to receive those funds. We do always have an influx of.
We, we do always have an influx of firefighters that are coming in, and those turnouts and PPE are quite expensive, and they do age out over time, so it's something that the Fire Department does look at quite a bit, to be able to try to get grants where possible for that PPE. It's very important for the firefighters that are out there doing, doing their, their jobs. So the item before you is to accept the grant, so adopt resolution 2025-11, accepting the grant funds in the amount of $38,598.56, awarded by Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation, and designate the deputy fire chief to act as the city's representative to execute those agreements and work with them to receive the PPE.
Chief, do you have anything else you wanted to add to that one?
As you know, we, this small department relies very heavily on grants, so we're very fortunate to get this firehouse. They normally don't go above the 25,000 threshold, but they made an exception with us, and those, they realized that at this time, we have probably about 20 sets of PPEs, the turnout coats and pants, that are going to go out of use. They only have a 10-year use on them, so we have a whole bunch of them that are expiring this year, 2025. So this will go a long way to help replace that, but we still have to reach out, continuously reach out and do more.
Did you put this together, Ed?
I had most of the verbiage passed on. We probably worked on this about a month, so I had a lot of help from one of our young firefighter paramedics that we just recently promoted to lieutenant that's very good at grant writing, so.
Well, thank you very much for all this, and make sure you thank that person that would put the whole thing together, and thank anybody that was involved in this, because this.
Absolutely.
This is the thing that really helps the Fire Department and the city out, so thank you.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'd like to add, add my admiration for the initiative. Oh, who is the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation? Do you know?
So they are a group, it's a franchise that was formed from New York City, from the Firehouse Subs. They are like Jersey Mike's, they have sub shops throughout the country, and their sole purpose is to use a lot of the proceeds that they garner every day to go towards helping different fire stations across the country.
So shouldn't we write them a thank you letter, or?
Absolutely.
Send them some avocados or something?
That's already in the works.
I was gonna, I was gonna suggest that, you know, maybe a pitcher, when we get the, when we get the turnouts, a pitcher with our kids.
Absolutely, you're, you're probably looking at doing something along the lines, right when we get the new rig, we'll also invite them to be part of that celebration.
Well, I, I would actually do something a little different, is find the oldest, fadest, oldest-looking rig and have them take a picture in front of that, so it doesn't look like we're this big flashy department and that we actually could use additional money.
Oh, yeah.
So take one of the brush, so take one of the faded brush rigs and have them stand in front of that.
I see where you're going with this, but the plan was to do this Fire Service Day, so we won't have the new rig.
Okay.
The, the new rig is going to be a different presentation.
So pass on my, my thanks to the, the young man that wrote the grant, and, you know, it's $35,000, that's, that's nothing to.
Thirty-eight, we found 3,000 more.
Oh, okay, all right.
Move that we adopt resolution 2025-11?
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Norm?
Yes.
John's, yes. Thank you, chief. 23.
23 is guardrail replacement and other repairs. Over the last several months, there has been some traffic accidents that has resulted in some damage to sections of guardrails along Hacienda and East Road as part of that. So we go through the process to file insurance claims for those, but we do need to make repairs to it. So we have, went out and solicited bids from contractors to be able to make those repairs. The, the segments of guardrail that needs to be repaired are on Hacienda Road, north of Canadá Sombre, south of Canadá Sombre, right at 1662 Hacienda Road, which is between East and West, and a section at 1045 East Road, which is like that hard 90-degree corner, be sort of between Valle and Papaya over by the golf course. There were some, some accidents in there, those sections that caused some damage. Grace did reach out to, to several contractors. We did receive bids back from two of the contractors. Crown Fence and Surface Constructors submitted their bids for those, those particular projects, and the final amounts for those are, looks like $66,007.50 for one and $60,565 from the other contractor. So the cost to replace those guardrails would put it within the requirements of City Council to, to make the approvals of it. So staff is recommending that we award a, a contract for the, the construction of those and a, and a contingency amount. So staff's recommendation is to authorize the finance manager to amend FY 2024-25 budget and increase account 101-450-PWD-6650 by $60,565 to repair and replace guardrails in those three locations on Hacienda Road and East Road, authorize a contingency in the amount of $9,084.75, 75 cents, or 15%, and authorize the finance manager to amend the FY 2024-25 budget and increase account number 101-450-PWD-6650 by $9,084.75, 75 cents for the contingency, and authorize the city manager to approve purchase order per the city's purchasing policy, and authorize staff to schedule Surface Contractors, Inc. to complete the work on the damaged sections of guardrail. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Sir Rafferty, I noticed in the material, you said only one was a hit and run?
Only one was hit and run, the other ones, there were sheriff's reports taken, and we have insurance information to, to file the claims to receive the, recoup our costs.
So are we going to recoup this money through those claims for the most part?
For the most part, yes.
Okay, and how successful are we at doing that?
What do you say, Grace? She does most of it. Sometimes it just depends on the insurance company and the limits and.
So we don't, we don't file an immediate claim when we get the sheriff's report, like a traffic accident? We don't tell them that, hey, look, you're, you're insured, hit and damaged city property? Is there a way we can do it more quickly and, and recoup the money so we have it in the bank, and then when we get ready to do the repairs, we can do them? Or do they require you actually submit?
Most of the require us to submit the, the cost for the construction, which a lot of times for us means we have to bid it, and then generally will require, guardrails expensive, so requires city council approval before we can.
That's why, yeah, that's why I was wondering if there's a way we can come up with a mechanism to do it a little bit quicker, because I know some of those accidents are fairly, fairly old and.
You know, this is pretty simple. So somebody runs into our guardrail and destroys it, they have insurance. Insurance shows up in the sheriff's report, we immediately file a claim against that individual, and we prosecute the claim. I mean, it's like, you know, if they're uninsured or if it's a hit and run and we don't know who did it, that's one thing, but we shouldn't be fronting funds when there's an insurance company that is more than obligated to, to underwrite the cost of this physical damage. So we, I guess the answer is we should have a process that actually works.
I mean, we have a public works director that's fairly knowledgeable in guardrail replacement. Maybe, maybe we just need to have a, our own rate sheet, and we just say that, you know, if you damage 100 feet of guardrail, our public works estimate for that replacement is $50,000, pay us $50,000, and that's our claim. They want to take us to court, fine, but my guess is they're not, you know. You can't argue, your person damaged the guardrail, the La Habra Heights Director of Public Works estimated that it costs $50,000 to replace, pay us $50,000.
But yeah, typically, when, when, in practice, when you, if somebody takes out a center median or something, the county or the state or whoever controls that, they, they send you a bill, period. You know, this isn't about who the, whatever, who do they get to do it? They, they do their own bill based on a, a pro-rata square footage cost, it's just simple. We can do that, and that's, that should, that substantiates the claim right away. If they want to fight about it, they will, they'll try to negotiate it, but at least we'll get it going.
Todd, any concerns with making these changes, or anything you're hearing that concerns you?
No.
I didn't understand.
I know in the past, we've had one incidence on East Road, the first time it got hit a few years ago. I'd have to, I'd have to check the file to see if it was fully paid, because sometimes we do receive the checks and I'm not aware of it.
The, the, the problem that I've got is, we're only paying a part of the cost of the city?
Yes.
So, you know, when we look at this, we should be billing these insurance companies for the all-in-con. I mean, Grace, your time's not free to go out there and look at it and estimate it, and the public works, the, you know, the person has to go out there, and if it's in the road and cleaning up the mess, that's not, so I mean, we should come up with a mechanism that keeps the city whole when someone runs into our guardrail. And it should include Grace's time, it should include our public works employees' time to go out there and do it, it should include our time to put together the package that we have to send out to get the, I mean, all of that. Trust me, coming from a, a company that, that, I, I've seen the bill, and it's, it's shocking what's in there. So I would really suggest that we look at, not, not, not as a source of revenue, but keeping our taxpayers and our citizens whole when someone hits our guardrail. So I can give you some examples, Rafferty, of how, someone that has a lot of equipment that gets hit all the time, how they, how they bill. And it's got, I mean, I, I would think the insurance companies are very used to seeing it, and it might be a way to keep us a little bit more whole when people, you know, hits a road sign. I mean, we should, we should immediately just say, okay, here's the flat rate for replacing a road sign, just have that documented, say, here you go, here's the rate for replacing that. All right, what do you need? Pull this back in here. So you're looking for approval on these repairs. I thought we had a, a grant for guardrail work. How does this fit into that grant?
We do have a grant, so as you're, we're talking a little bit about trying to figure out a cost analysis of how much it is for a section of guardrail, it's going to cost X to do it on a, we have an idea of what it is, is one of, part of that, that proposal that we have going right now, so.
So, so when we replace this, I see it's repair and replace, are we bringing it up to the new, I know there's a new guardrail standard, are we bringing it up to new, or are we just replacing like for like?
We have to upgrade it to the current, current Caltrans standard, so anytime there are damages, it does have to get out. If it's substandard, it has to be brought up to current standards.
So if we do these repairs, then we're going to bring that section up to current standards, hopefully using the money that we get that we recoup from.
Insurance.
And, and what I would say is, we should very quickly come up with a billing mechanism and just bill it, even if we haven't done the repair. And then that'll allow us to replace additional guardrail in the city, because I know the grant wasn't enough to, to do a lot. It was just a very minimal amount, right?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll move approval that we approve what the recommendations is written out in the staff report.
Okay, second?
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol? John's, yes. Thank you for your patience, Rafferty, and Grace, thank you. 24, the heli hydrant easement.
Yes, we have installed a heli hyd, heli hydrant on a portion of property owned by the Habitat Authority earlier this year. Council went through a process to approve a vacation of La Habra Road, which runs from Fullerton Road to our northern city limits as part of it. So as part of that process, it's completing a couple easement aspects of it, and our city attorney has been working diligently on getting that part of it completed. He has a little update for council.
Yeah, well, back in 21, the city and the Habitat Authority entered into an agreement pertaining to the construction of the heli hydment, easements related thereto, and the vacation of La Habra Road. Vacation just meaning the city giving up public access rights, but still retaining the right for emergency services vehicles to use the road to fight fires, public safety, and the like. There've been a couple discussion points about clarity as to those, finalization of those documents. Couple weeks ago, I received correspondence from the Habitat's attorney with some changes that deemed acceptable. It's been on me to finish those documents. I haven't had the chance to, but I plan to within the next week, because I know there's been discussions with the Habitat Authority, and we both want to get this done quickly so it is finalized. So that's the status. If the council has any specific questions, we can talk about it, but the goal is to get this done and for you to give me authority to finalize all this. Once we do get a finalization of the documents, then we will be recording the vacation resolution, which is the giving up of the public access rights, but we'll be retaining the emergency service vehicle access. And the Habitat Authority has agreed to our fire chief's recommendations of maintaining at least a 12-foot wide cube path, meaning both 12 feet wide and 12 feet tall, so emergency vehicles can traverse on the roadway. So that is my report as to status.
So, so process-wise, you're going to have this done?
Hopefully in a week.
And I sign it?
If that's the council's direction, if they give the mayor the authority to sign the agreement for finalization, we can do that tonight.
You made some commitments to the Habitat to get this done fairly quickly, so any concerns with, once Todd gets done executing that, that document?
I just want to make sure that it's going to keep saying that the clearance is at the discretion of our fire chief. That language isn't changing, right?
The clearance, he does have authority, but the specific, the maintenance requirement is 12 by 12.
No, that's on the vacation of the easement.
Right.
But in the overall agreement, in what they agree to clear, it's.
That is correct, that is.
General language about its.
That language is not changing as part of this, at least I have not seen any change.
Okay.
That is, that is correct, what the mayor just said.
I would not, I would not allow, Carol, you should, you should know me by now, I would not allow that to happen. But Todd, if you would just confirm it, just one last time.
Yes, that is correct.
When I, when I come to sign it, I'll want to just make sure that that's.
Did, was there any discussion about the fire fee that they pay?
No, I mean, I, I had Rafferty look at the fire fee, and it looks like they're paying with the, with the increments, that that fee is now pretty close to what residents are paying for a similar amount.
Okay.
It, 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 I mean, Rafferty, we did that look up, right? And I, I know you gave me some numbers on the back, kind of back in the envelope, but it looked like it was getting, with the escalations, getting pretty close to at our own.
It's just about what it would be if you base it off our fire tax calculation for all the, the land that the Habitat owns within La Habra Heights, their current fee that they pay to the city, their in lieu fee, is pretty much what their fee would be today.
I, I know, I have a vacant acre and I pay, remember I said?
We used your example, I used that example, and Rafferty worked the numbers for me.
All right.
And it was within, I don't know, $1,000 or so?
Right around there, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I, I felt, I did follow through on that one, Carol, because I wanted to make sure that, that they were paying their fair share, and I, I, Rafferty convinced me that they were close enough that I, it wasn't worth making an issue out of.
I guess we're all in agreement that you sign the authorization, or to sign the easement when it comes.
I'm not hearing.
I guess I, I'm gonna, I know it's, I, one other question, so how are we going forward on, I've heard a lot of talk about, we want them to clear 200 feet back from their boundary line or along certain roads. Is anything happening on that?
I, I'm going to expect Chief Jorgensen to work very closely with the Habitat and ensuring that if 200 feet is the right amount, then 200 feet should be cleared. To be fair to the Habitat, I don't know that 200 feet is always the right amount.
Right, you're doing your. Right, you're doing your risk.
We should, we should look at it and say, yeah, in this case, we want 200 feet. In some cases, we might want them to clear more because of the type, the, the fuel dense, I mean, I'm not an expert, but I know that, you know, if there's a lot of undergrowth, that there's a lot of debris, if there's a high fuel loading, 200 feet might not be enough.
Okay, just as long as that's still open.
I, I have heard, I have heard their, trying to think of what Ivan's title is because I don't want to mess it up. I think he's chair of their board, right? He's their board chair?
He's their board chair, correct, yes.
That he has personally told me that the Habitat will work with our fire marshal to ensure that the Habitat clears their land appropriately.
Yes, I've been fostering professional relationships with Andrea as well as Michelle, their ecologist, and I've, I've actually reached out to Michelle a couple times and for her professional opinion regarding non-Habitat properties. So it's, I'm pretty confident that we will be able to continue this relationship and make sure that the public safety is really, you know, is really key in this situation. Also, regarding that, yes, I'm, I'm looking at ladder fuels, I'm looking at, you know, all types of fuels and I'm also talking to, and talking to Andrea and Michelle over with the Habitat Authority. We've also discussed, you know, fuel mod and, you know, and as part of our discussion. So yes, I'm, I'm on it.
Well, according to the agreement, you have a lot of discretion, but, and I am a supporter of the Habitat, I just, thank you.
We, we, but we have a job to do to make sure we protect the residents of La Habra Heights, so.
Well, we also want to protect the Habitat from burning down also. So it's, it's a win-win if we get this done correctly.
Okay, so I think we're clear that the mayor can sign the easement once Todd gets done making the modifications. I, I would ask Todd, once you get done, just if, if Chief Jorgensen can just take a quick look at it, make sure that it did.
Of course.
Incorporate everything. Thank you.
We should, just because the recorder's office will ask, we should get a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the upcoming easement agreement with the Habitat and that the mayor sign it.
Second?
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Yes.
And John's yes. All right, last but not least, Norm, is this your item?
Yes.
Item 25, the La Habra Heights informational flyer.
Okay, I just passed out another version of it showing the idea being, have the, well, let me, let me introduce it. Basically, from time to time, we have people moving to La Habra Heights who really don't understand what sort of community they're moving into. And I think specifically of the individuals who were upset about dogs barking. They felt there shouldn't be any dogs barking in the area. Well, why do they move in an area which encourages animal ownership and in a neighborhood that has a lot of dogs? What I'd like to do is do something to give a heads up to prospective residents. So on the one hand, we could track people who want to live in a real rural environment or residential rural as opposed to pretend rural. And on the other hand, if there are people who generally don't understand what they're moving into and would like to give them a heads up also that before they buy property and want to make improvements and this and that and the other, and suddenly they find out, well, I can't do this, can't do that. So just as a draft for consideration and for perhaps giving your thought during the next month or two as to what improvements you'd like to make. What I did as I sat down and I went through our general plan, extracted most of the wording from our general plan, which describes, describing what sort of community this is. And I would propose just a brief handout of perhaps one, one side having our goals of our general plan, the other side having a description of some of the things that La Habra writes is, is important. And it starts out by its first, first paragraph, first couple lines of our general plan starts out, it introduces, that general plan starts out, you La Habra Heights is a unique community within the greater Southern California metropolitan area. And then it just starts describing what makes us unique. So what I had in mind is perhaps working on this as a draft, you make your suggestions and input over the next month or two. And perhaps we could, and I'd like to have something that we could ask real estate agents to hand out to their customers. They wouldn't have to, of course, but at least promote the, you know, they could use it to promote sales on the one hand, if we, if it was worded properly. On the other hand, we want to, you know, basically give a heads up to people who don't understand a rural environment, suddenly they move here and, oh my goodness, there's horses in the street and no streetlights and so forth. So I just want to perhaps avoid some of the controversies we have from time to time when people move up here and find out they, it isn't the sort of area they wanted to live in. Anyway, that's my thoughts.
Any discussion? Norm, thank you for pulling it together and introducing it as an agenda item. I'll take a look at it. But my, my cursory glance is we might want to include, again, what's been talked about several times today is the fact that, you know, La Habra Heights is a, you know, high fire, high fire area and, and.
Excellent idea, which I'm surprised I didn't think of that myself, but that's why it's just a first step.
Yep. All right.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, that's all I have, so it's the end of the administrative items. Any individual council member items they'd like to discuss?
I'd just like to bring back Glenn Shepherd's testimony today. And wondering generally to have a short discussion among us as to how we feel about this, this initiative measure and whether we as a city council want to participate as a sponsor of that. From my perspective, I read it before, even before I saw it from Glenn, and I'm individually going to support this. I'm kind of wondering whether we should do it as a city. So I just, just a general discussion among us on that.
I was gonna suggest maybe we agendize it and see if we want to be one of the cities that have endorsed the initiative.
Since it's not agendized, I won't, we won't have a discussion.
Right.
But yeah, we can, let's, let's agendize it and see what May looks like.
I mean, it's sort of consistent with the resolution we passed before, but we could expand on that resolution.
Let's agendize it.
Yeah, no, I, I agree that we need to agendize it.
Any other? So I promised John Dominguez that I would bring up a couple of items since he, he had a little minor health issue, he couldn't be here tonight, but number one, for those of you that aren't, that are watching, that aren't members of Firewatch, he asked me to re-emphasize Firewatch. Rafferty, I'd like to get a meeting set up with the industry sheriff station. I know Hector had to leave, but I, I really want to make sure that we have law enforcement coverage this year and I want to, I'd like to meet with the captain if possible because last year they, there's a term used called busted our car and assigned Hector to another city, which in my mind is completely unacceptable on our highest-risk day of the year. So I want to make sure that that captain understands that in, in no uncertain terms has had to happen again this year. We need our, especially since the Fourth of July, I believe is on a Friday, which means probably in May, we should agendize, start doing the Fourth of July planning. I'm not sure, Chief Martin, if, how, I, I know last year when I talked with the chief that he wasn't aware of kind of the role and what Firewatch, what the Firewatch community did. This year, I know John would like to have more of a coordinated effort with bringing in Firewatch, making sure that we are very coordinated with the sheriff's department so that we avoid what happened to you last year happening again. So I, Rafferty, if we can make those couple of things happen. I know John is working very hard and this is, he's very passionate about this and I told him that I would, I would bring it up today.
Yeah, May is typically when we start looking at Fourth of July and planning out.
Yeah. The other thing I want to make sure of is the sheriff's department is supposed to assign contract city reserve hours. If you can just take a note as part of your discussion with industry station, I'd like to know how many reserve hours the city of La Habra Heights has received in the last two years. We should, we should be asking, especially on dates like the Fourth, for them to assign reserve units to the city, to work with our fire department and Firewatch on these, you know, high-risk issues, especially the illegal parking and people that are refusing our fire department's orders. We should have a deputy up here that can respond to those events. All I have, anything else? All right, public comments not on the agenda. Anybody have something they want to discuss for those of you that's stuck it out with us for a couple hours? Nope? All right, I'll adjourn the meeting, thank you.